Thank you.
Now, I'll entertain a motion to open the floor to the public.
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Bouchere. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Lynch. Oh, we have a roll call, please.
Vice President Bouchere.
Yes.
Councilmember Fury.
Yes.
Councilmember Lynch.
Yes.
Councilmember Shortway.
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Floor is open to the public for comment on agenda item only, which would be, in this case, the cannabis ordinance. Have anything to comment to the public or to the council? Mayor, please come to the podium, give us your name and...
I think you gotta come up here.
Up here. Last time you were here, it was down there, but...
We're just playing with you, that's all.
Moved your clothes out.
It's easier for us to throw bottles.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Chris Dowling.
Chris.
Chris Dowling.
Dowling?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm here, also my wife Lori Dowling is here. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow neighbors of Vernon Township. My name is Chris Dowling, and I'm here today on behalf of Sussex Cultivation LLC, a conditionally licensed cannabis cultivation company run by a diverse team of local business owners, healthcare professionals, and a retired member of law enforcement. As a Vernon taxpayer for 35 years, we were very excited for the possibility of building a cannabis cultivation site right here in Vernon. As early as 2018, back when the state had only a medical cannabis program, our team met with the township leadership and shared with them our vision, which included applying for one of the very few cannabis cultivation licenses the state would approve. In 2019, with the town's approval and shared vision of economic development in the emerging cannabis industry, Sussex Cultivation was issued a formal letter of support from the township. In December 2021, this council passed Resolution 21-283 endorsing, once again, Sussex Cultivation for recreational cannabis cultivator license and its proposed location on a rural piece of underutilized property here in town. With the township's support secured, we submitted our initial application to the state. Just two months ago, after reviewing literally hundreds of applications, the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission announced a limited number of conditional cannabis cultivation licensee awards. Sussex Cultivation was among the select few businesses to receive a cultivation license award. The next step for us, and time is of the essence, is to submit to the state a complete application that includes documents, addressing items that we believe are of importance to this township. Some of them are SOPs, standard operating procedures on safety and security plans, community impact and social responsibility plans, environmental impact plans, workforce and job development plans, and odor mitigation plans. The items above, as well as many more, will be carefully reviewed by the state before they approve any applications. Given that our application has been pre-approved, thus our conditional license, we are confident that the final approval will be forthcoming. We were made aware that Township Council is considering amendments to its zoning ordinance regarding cannabis cultivators. We are here today simply to support the township in its efforts to settle upon local laws and regulations that make sense for the community. To that end, we note that our proposed location, previously approved by Resolution 21-283, is also appropriately zoned for cannabis cultivation under the proposed zoning amendments currently under consideration by this council. For us, Vernon Township has always been the obvious choice for our business. It is a place with rich agriculture history and a community deserving of the economic incentives and tax revenue of the new industry. Our commitment to Vernon has been unwavering for several years now, and we have continued to invest time and major financial resources into what will hopefully become a long-term partnership. We kindly ask the township, consider our efforts to date as it continues to fine-tune its policies to make cannabis cultivation a reality here in Vernon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. Dow. You mentioned a particular piece of property. Have you purchased a property? Has it been...
We're on... We have a lease with the property.
You have a lease?
Lease, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Greetings, council members, mayor, fellow Vernon residents. My name is Wally Ibrahim, and I am...
Sorry, Wally?
Ibrahim.
Ibrahim, okay.
And I am part owner of Garden State Green Genetics, G3 for short. G3 received its conditional approval from the CRC on or around April 12, 2022. Submit this comment in response to the proposed amendment to remove the words "farmland assessed property" from the Vernon cannabis ordinance. After thorough review of the applicable state law, NJ Constitution, and Vernon cannabis ordinance, it is evident that the language in the Vernon Township ordinance is in direct conflict with the state law, and we request that this council vote to amend, same based on the following. New Jersey common law preemption jurisprudence does not allow for municipalities to enact or enforce any ordinance that conflicts with state law. NJ Statute, Section 54, 48-66, conflicting local ordinances, local preemption states. Notwithstanding any other provision of law, local governmental units of this state shall not enact or enforce any ordinance or law or regulation conflicting with or preempted by any provision of this act or with any policy of the state expressed by this act, whether that policy be expressed by inclusion of a provision in this act or by exclusion of that subject from the act. Two, the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission enacted NJAC 1730 to regulate cultivation facilities and the land on which the facility is located to not be farmland assessed. Under the New Jersey Administrative Code 17-30, adopted August 19, 2021 by the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission, Subchapter 5.1 Municipal Authority, in pertinent part states, a municipality may enact an ordinance or regulation as permitted pursuant to the particular municipality's form of government that is not in conflict with the act or this chapter and may amend such ordinance on regulation. One, that establishes a numerical limit on the number of cannabis businesses, provided that any such ordinance or regulation shall specify the maximum number of each class of license that is allowed within the municipality and for which the municipality has established a numerical limit. Moreover, NJAC 1730, Subchapter 10, Cannabis Cultivator Authorized Conduct, Subchapter 10.1A, states, "In no case shall a cannabis cultivator operate or be located on land that is valued, assessed, or taxed as an agricultural or horticultural use pursuant to the Farmland Assessment Act of 1964." Three, the current version of the township ordinance creates a conflict of state and local laws by requiring cannabis cultivation facilities to be located on farmland assessed property. Vernon Township Council adopted ordinance 21-16, which states in pertinent part, additionally, no more than two cannabis cultivators shall also be permitted in the McAfee Village mixed-use zone and in the R2 zone for any farmland-assessed property on the northbound side of County Road 516. Based on the foregoing, Township Council should vote yes to the proposed amendment to the ordinance for the following reasons. One, the current Vernon Township cannabis ordinance requires cultivation facilities to operate on farmland-assessed property. Two, the state of New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission regulations state that in no case shall a cannabis cultivator operate on farmland-assessed property. Three, it is impossible for G3 Sussex Cultivation to operate following the township of Vernon's ordinance without violating state regulations, thereby causing a conflict of laws. Four, where there's a conflict between state and local regulations, law, state law preemption applies. Five, here the state occupies the field by inserting the words "in no case." "In no case" is interpreted to leave no room for exception to this regulation and therefore preempts Vernon Or... Excuse me, Vernon Ordinance 21-16 as it relates to farmland-assessed property. And six, if the council decides to amend the ordinance to also allow additional cultivators, it should specify a number as simply using a word, the word "unlimited", and an ordinance is also preempted by state law pursuant to NJAC 1730, Subchapter 5.1A1. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can you write down your name there?
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
It'll be much easier for our clerk. I have to take the minute.
Aside from Mr... I want to hear from...
I don't see any... I thought, um...
They were supposed to have people come today.
Yeah, I know. I'll second you.
I thought there was gonna be at least two or three.
Somebody else said we were coming.
There was supposed to be two. I was there last night.
Mr. Tadrick, would you please come up and sit at the table over here so that you can testify as a member of the Land Use Board, should the need be required? Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment to the council?
Sorry, I have one more submission. We actually purchased our land, so that's also another...
Now, the tally has been conveyed.
Correct.
Thank you. I was gonna ask that.
Thank you.
And you also received your conditional license?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anyone else seeking? No one, no one's coming forward. May I have a motion to... Oh, you have anybody?
I have Peg DeStasi.
Mr. DeStasi, how are you?
Good evening. How are you?
Fine, thank you. Yourself?
I'm great, thank you. I just wanted to state that I do not believe that we should open the floodgates to an unlimited amount of cultivators. I think we should remain with our original number of two and test the waters. Why would we want to open the gates when we don't know how this is gonna work out? Let's, let's take this slow. Let's test the waters first. Stay with the two, and, you know, if in five years it turns out to be successful, then go and amend it. But I disagree with opening the gates to an unlimited number. Well, thank you for your time. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. DeStasi.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else?
Yes. Tom McClackery.
Mr. McClackery, how are you?
Yeah, doing pretty good. I'd just like to say, I think, I didn't really catch his name. I think his name was Ibrahim.
Yes.
That guy was pretty damn good.
I'm sure he appreciates it. I see a smile on his face.
He really caught a lot of, you know, discrepancies, shall we say, in the, in the ordinance. Having said that, I'd just like to say, I support expanding the growth areas from two to... Let's put... He said, "We need a number." Hey, put it at 100. Put it at 1,000. Put it at whatever number's gonna drive down my property taxes because that's what I wanna do, and that's why I'd like to see. And that's what this cultivation's gonna do. And I, again, I'd just like to say, Mr. Ibrahim was, was damn good. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. McClackery.
Today's your day.
I don't have any other hands.
Seeing no one else coming forward or nobody else wishing to comment virtually, may I have a motion to close the floor to the public?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Shortway. Roll call, please.
Vice President Bouchere.
Yes.
Councilmember Fury.
Yes.
Councilmember Lynch.
Yes.
Councilmember Shortway.
Yes.
Council President Rizzuto.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Mr. Council President, if you could, Mayor, would you and the council allow me to make a statement concerning this, please?
Concerning?
This issue here. Okay, just, um, my comments are part of my efforts to first, keep us focused on the document that led to this special meeting, that being ordinance number 22-11. And second, to offer a strong request as mayor, that the council take two specific actions in regard to ordinance number 22-11. That was successfully introduced on May the 9th. My first request is that the council approve ordinance 22-11 as it was introduced. So, just take that. Don't be too scared about this particular statement there. I'll explain why. My second request is that the council then act to address any concerns that are created by the May 19, 2022 recommendation from the Land Use Board. Let me explain the reasons for my two requests. My request that the council approve ordinance number 22-11 as it was introduced is due to 10 important facts. Fact one, this ordinance came about only as a result of our zoning official taking a more detailed look at our ordinance that permits cannibal cultivator's license to be used in our town. During that more detailed look, she discovered in this ordinance some minor but consequential wording that would require two companies, two that are here, Sussex Cultivation and Garden State Green Genetics, both of which have been awarded a conditional cannabis cultivator's license from the state of New Jersey. It would require them to seek costly, lengthy, and time-consuming exemptions in order to use properties that they have already purchased or leased specifically to use in their Vernon's cannabis cultivation operation. Fact two, prior to Sussex Cultivation and Garden State Green Genetics finalizing their purchase or lease of these properties, the municipality told them, both verbally and by resolutions of support, that these properties were fully acceptable to the town to be used for their planned cannabis cultivation operations. Fact number three, prior to providing Sussex Cultivation and Garden State Green Genetics resolutions of support, the office of the mayor and the council thoroughly reviewed the credentials that they presented to us and found them to be the type of high-quality business organizations that we would welcome as cannabis cultivators in our town. Their high-quality business organization has been confirmed by the state of New Jersey, as evidenced by the fact that while there were hundreds, hundreds of organizations applying for a limited, limited, that is, just 34 cannabis cultivator licenses that the state of New Jersey would be granting, they were two of the 34 that were issued cannabis cultivator's license by the state. Fact number four, the cannabis cultivator's license that are issued by the state of New Jersey are conditional licenses that require the conditional license holder to meet very specific and challenging conditions within 120 days from the date that the conditional license is issued. If the conditional license holder fails to meet any of the specific conditions within the 120-day timeframe, the conditional license holder forfeits their right to be issued an annual license to operate a cannabis cultivation facility. Fact number five, the two cannabis cultivator's licenses, who are license holders who have planned to operate in Vernon Township, we issued their cultivable, their conditional licenses on April the 2nd, 2022. This means that they have only until August the 9th of this year to meet all of the conditions needed to maintain their licenses. Fact six, these conditional cultivable, cannabis cultivation license holders must provide the state of New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission a host of documents before the 120 days expire. For example, I just wanna list just 12. The gentleman from Sussex Cultivation listed a four. They must provide an environmental impact plan. They must provide a safety and security plan, a community impact, social responsibility, and research statement, a workforce development and job creation plan, their standard operating procedures for quality control, their standard operating procedures for record keeping, their standard operating procedures for waste disposal and sanitation, their standard operating procedures for cultivation, their standard operating procedures for accounting and tax compliance, their, their standard operating procedures for secure transportation of cannabis, their standard operating procedures for reporting of test results for cannabis, and a letter from the municipal zoning official confirming that the property that was listed in both, the conditional cannabis cultivator's license holders, resolution of support from the town council, and the application to the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission is properly zoned for cannabis cultivation. Fact seven, these two conditional cannabis cultivating license holders have advised that they have all but completed the documents listed above, with the major concern now being the difficulty in getting the required letter from the Vernon Township zoning officer. Fact number eight, in order for the Vernon Township zoning official to be able to provide the required letter, she needs the minor but consequential wording in our cannabis cultivator ordinance corrected. An ordinance number 22-11 will do just that. Fact number nine, these two conditional cannabis cultivator license holders spent, spent months of time, they spent hundreds of thousands of dollars applying for these very competitive licenses. In fact, while the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission had expressed its intent to issue only 37 cannabis cultivator licenses during this first round, the standards were actually so high until they only issued 34 of these licenses. And the two organizations that want to use their license in Vernon Township were, were two of those 34. And finally, fact number 10, our town committed to these companies that if they were successful in getting a cannabis cultivator licenses, license, that the properties that they purchased or leased could be used for their operations. We must keep our promise and applying, and applying ordinance number 22, and approving ordinance number 22-11 will allow us to keep that promise within a timeframe that would allow these two companies to keep their licenses that they have worked so hard and paid so much to earn. And my final couple paragraphs. My second proposal is that after the council approved ordinance 22-11 as it was introduced, they then take whatever amount of time they need to address any concerns created by the May 19, 22 recommendation from the Land Use Board. I think we must keep our word, and we must not allow bureaucratic, bureaucratic actions to cause us to lose this opportunity to gain, to obtain these initial, these additional needed commercial tax dollars. You know, this does not have to be complicated. All we need to do is just do it. That is my statement, Mr. Council President, council members. I just wanna kinda focus us on why we're here and what we really need to do. We can do two things at one time. We can take the kind of action to allow them to meet their dateline, and then we can go back and make whatever changes for this to reduce the number from infinitive to two, to three, or four, or what have you. But let's not pass on this opportunity that we have here. And just one last thing, Mr. President and, and council, I'll provide you this. Just before I came in here, I received a copy of the economic impact statement from Sussex Cultivation. And the impact, the statement is seven pages long. Let me just read you something from the conclusion. And this, and this, this, it's a impact statement was provided and confirmed by their lawyer. So let's assume that it's true. This economic impact statement says this one company will create a total of 65 new jobs in Vernon Township. This statement says, "A total of five-year cumulative impact of Vernon paying taxes just based on the current tax rate and what our tax assessors say the improvements are likely to be on this property will be from this one firm, $684,060." And the impact on the community investment that they plan just to invest to the community, they say, is $300,000. That's just investments for various kinds of things. And the one that's really got me, and which I noticed important, and this is what's driving my thoughts on this, it is estimated just the 2% that we plan to get from there would be $3.5 million within that period of time. Now, this is just from one firm. That's 2% of their gross profit. Now, we can say this is not true. It is true. But, you know, we've gotta go with some numbers. And I checked their legal firm out who certified that this is accurate. So my point here is that this is a great, great opportunity for Vernon Township, and we can have our cake and eat it too. We don't have to go to 1,001 of these. Let's just pass this ordinance as it's written, and then let's take all the time we need, Mr. Council President, council members, to deliberate and do what we really wanna do. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I'm in favor of having cannabis cultivation, I'll tell you right now. But what makes me scratch my head is that we had this same ordinance last year get passed.
With all these errors.
And then we did it again and just changed one word. And, and it looked like everything was going to hell in a handbasket.
Right.
I, I don't understand why, and this is, no disrespect to you, Mayor, or the council members, it seems like in the last six months, all we've been doing is working on things that happened last year. And, and let's, we gotta get this right. Vernon needs to be on the right side of history with this, because this is not just coffee money we're talking about. The mayor just brought out the impact statement. These 65 jobs. Okay, if that's, if, if that's gonna work for just Sussex Cultivation, that's great. But now we have G3. You know, what, what is gonna, is that gonna be double the, the same impact? And there's, there's talk about all the things that we have to do in this town, like fix the roads and everything else. We're looking at the money to do the things that we need to do that we were elected in this town to do. And quite honestly, I understand people's ambivalence to marijuana because it is a paradigm in a lot of people's lives. But let's take a look at this and go forward. I have no problem introducing this ordinance as it was actually written with the two. And then, next year, we can come back and we could take and revisit this ordinance if it happens, because from what I understand, the state is not handing out any more licenses for cultivation right now.
For two years, at least.
For at least two more years. So we could put unlimited in there, and it wouldn't matter, because nobody else is gonna be getting a license.
But we can't.
But we can't. Unlimited is a sloppy number. And, and, and I'll go back and say that I...
You'll own that.
I own it, yeah.
I think.
I own it. Does that make you feel better?
It makes you feel a little better, quite honestly.
I'm, I'm not, you know, honest person.
I didn't vote, but I own it too.
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I didn't own it, and I appreciate it. I thank you. I do appreciate that. I, I agree. I think we spent a lot of time on something, right, that what happened last year, and we're talking about it again. I'd like to ask Josh real quick. Josh, can we re, can we introduce it amended and change unlimited back to two? Can we do that right now?
So what, there's three options, I think, that the council has with respect to the ordinance that's on the agenda for the second reading on Monday. One is...
Excuse me, before, Josh?
Yes.
One other thing, before you go there, because I know the concern was the number.
Yep.
We sent this over to our professionals on the Land Use Board. And, and I think it's necess, and they came back to us with a, a response, which I think is necessary that we consider. And, and if, in fact, we can either do it later, or, you know, subsequent to an approval or inclusive, I think it needs to be talked about. What the other thing...
I think it needs to be talked about. What the other thing, the other point was the the no cultivators in an R two zone, any R two zone. And the fact that we had to make the change uh, from Route five seventeen uh, west of Route five seventeen to include all of that property. Now, if we go ahead and improve the original ordinance, which was inconsistent with Route five seventeen and also I believe the R two zone, are we going to run into a problem there? Or can we now include it as part? Or is that too many changes and we we would require a reintroduction of the ordinance there?
I I got it. Um, so I think there's, there's really three options here. One is you can reject the ordinance that is on for second reading on Monday, in which case the prior ordinance would be the effective ordinance with respect to cultivation. Similarly, the council can approve the ordinance uh, with the unlimited number of cultivators and that will become the new ordinance. The third option is at Monday's meeting or a later meeting, the ordinance can be further amended and then introduced. That further amendment and introduction will become a first reading of the new ordinance. And then you'll have a second reading at whatever the statutory date is. So if the council's inclined to make amendments to the ordinance, they can do that on Monday. And if those amendments are approved and the amended ordinance ultimately reaches the number of votes to be introduced, Monday's reading will be the new for the first reading of the new further amended ordinance and then we'll have a second reading in a later date. You know, similarly, um, the, if the ordinance fails on Monday and we revert back to the old ordinance, nothing prevents the council from introducing a new ordinance at the next meeting or a later meeting, further amending um, the cannabis cultivation regulation. So there is some flexibility here. Um, and I also just like to note, this situation is not unique to Vernon. Um, the state, the rollout of the cannabis legislation was not particularly smooth, was not particularly the state did not provide a lot of guidance to municipalities other than to say, we're going to allow you to regulate zoning for cannabis, but nothing else. Everything else is preempted and you guys can kind of figure it out. The league of municipalities then adopted a position that all municipalities should opt out. They're really so for municipalities such as Vernon that wanted to opt in, you know, you're, we've been, you know, figuring out as we go along. So this is part of that that figuring out process and certainly, um, it seems that there are some solutions available to the government, to the council. One further thing with respect to the land use boards recommendations and what the land use board recommended, um, those are the land use boards views. The council's not bound by them. And certainly if a majority of the council chooses to go a different direction, they're entitled to do so though. You know, it's part of the the process we have here where the land use board can give recommendations, but they're just that recommendations.
Josh, do you mind if I ask Josh a question? Um, if at the next meeting on Monday's meeting, if it, um, this ordinance does have to be reintroduced.
You're talking twenty-two dash eleven?
Twenty-two eleven.
Two eleven.
If it has to be reintroduced with any amendments, does it have to go back to the land use board again?
Probably.
Okay.
Depending on what the amendments are, um, I if if the amendment is, you know, only reducing unlimited and going back to two, I'd probably say that doesn't need to go back to the land use board because they've they've already opined. That really isn't some numerical issue, not a land use issue, but if we're talking about residential zones and something broader, that would lead to go back to the land use board.
Well, that was addressed in their response letter to us that they recommended that. So the only thing that comes up to my mind is, and also the the consideration of changing the west of Route, uh, Route five seventeen, getting rid of that inconsistency. That was a third area which was addressed. And the other one that wasn't that had not been initially considered was the fact that they asked that any any application have to go before the land use board. Mister Mister Tadrick, am I correct?
That's, you were right on three of them. There's one fourth one. They really wanted to require growing be done inside a building.
Right, that's correct. Thank you for bringing that up.
That's that's, and that that's really not something that they necessarily need to require. That's a state.
You can't, you can't grow weed outside anyway.
If you want, you want to try to grow it outside of a building, you got to get special permission from the state and they won't grant it.
I I I agree.
Okay.
No problem with that. My concern is that at what level of sophistication does the state require that the township may say that's not good enough? Now, we can't ask, I don't believe we can ask for more than the state because the state trumps us. But if the state hasn't, is styling on it, I think we can ask for it. Am I correct?
So on the on the preemption issue, if the state has spoken and if the state regs are such that it has to be grown indoors, then the state reg would control. If the state has not spoken on an issue, generally speaking, preemption can be be dicey and it can, you know, it's a fact driven analysis. But if the state has not spoken on an issue, the municipality is free to regulate it. With respect to the condition as well from the land use board that applicants have to go before the land use board, certainly any application for site plan approval within the municipality would have to go before the land use board pursuant to the MLUL. So that, you know, I I don't foresee a situation whereby somebody would get a site plan approved without appearing before the land use board and getting their approval.
Right. I, uh,
My 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 key point here is this, is that, um, I I'm concerned about this hundred twenty.
Timeline? There's a timeline.
Yeah, that 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 there's a timeline.
I was going to bring up, what is the timeline?
Uh, the, uh, the timeline is a hundred and twenty days from the date that the license is issued. And I think, as I I had, I think that's August the ninth.
My birthday.
All right?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, so.
August the ninth.
It's a hundred and twenty days, so the count would start the day after you receive your license.
And I think it was April the eleventh.
Yes.
It was April the eleventh that the license, excuse me, was issued. And so it's a hundred and twenty days from there. That they've got to have all of their documents to the state. And then a- and and simply by providing that documents to the state, state's not going to say, okay, good, you got to go. The state's going to review all of those. They're going to make business. They go, they still have an awful lot of hoops they got.
Still a cutoff date. And that was the date is on it.
It needs to be received in Trenton.
It needs to be, right. So and 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 most of these documents that I read, uh, that I listed and they've have, most of them, they've already started preparing those. Was part of the application process. Not actually got to fine tune them and provide that information. So my only concern, I I I don't have any issue with uh, reducing it from eleven to two or to three. I I don't really have any issue with that. Uh, I it's, if we can, if we can do that and pass this ordinance as it is, that gives us the time. We we we.
You're saying pass the ordinance as as it is and then amend later on.
Yeah, because ordinances are living documents. They are amended all the time. And I know that most of us say, oh, my God, can we ever get anything right? We're amended here, we're amended there. Well, a lot changes and especially with this cannabis. A- as I have mentioned to you, Mister Mister Council President, unfortunately, the whole, the whole cannabis legislation is kind of like flying a plane and building that at the same time. And that's what the state is doing. They're changing things as they go and we are having to kind of adjust. And so are the individuals who are trying to pay all the money and and do all the things right to try to get the license. So now we 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 are pretty unique in Vernon in the sense that we actually have two individuals who've been issued a a conditional license. There are places who don't. You know, we've got two golden goose, for lack of a better word here, and they really want to lay those golden eggs. Uh, there are, there are lots of restrictions. You know, I I would say this, that let's let them get their conditional license. They got to still jump through those hoops. And then they have to come before the land use board for site plan approval and all those other things. So we get two or three or four bites of the apple. If we just did not have this timeline, we could do a lot of things quite different, I think.
It's that much of a timeline. I mean, if if we assume we amend it on Monday's meeting.
That would be the.
Have a first reading and then our second reading would be
I think it's fourteen days, right?
Two weeks later on the, um, the twenty-seventh.
Oh, that's the next meeting?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the twenty-seventh. Am I wrong, Marcy?
No, that's correct. But I mean, as long as, like Josh said, as long as it doesn't have to go to the land use.
That's what, that's that's what, that's what I.
I mean, I I obviously, these, these are professionals. They're preparing all their documents. They have, you know, they're not waiting until we do the, you know, they're working on this because they're professionals.
Oh, yeah.
And there's.
Most of them.
I I don't want to, I I understand, I totally respect the timeline, but I I don't think it's you know, we're, we're not even in in July yet, right?
Yeah.
So I think it's completely doable. I I don't see, I mean, you're talking August.
It it's it's doable, I think, as I understand it from our meeting calendar. Uh, you know, uh, it depends upon what.
I mean, they can have everything done.
Depends upon what is decided to be changed as to whether or not it would have to go back to the land use board. Then we've got to get their meeting calendar.
Next meeting, Joe.
Uh, last night, so.
So it's pretty.
We should just go back to the original ordinance and have two.
Can I interject something?
Yeah.
I don't think you can because the written ordinance is kind of unclear and it includes, as you said, the farmland issue, farm, uh, farmland.
Farmland, yes. And unlimited, which both go against the state statute.
And you were absolutely correct.
And I understand where it's a crunch for the time, but it's not horrible. We're not saying July ninth, we're saying August ninth.
Can you call a spec, can a special meeting in the land use board be called?
One in, uh, in two weeks. It's going to be before your next meeting anyway. So, I mean, if they need to call a special meeting, I'm sure, you know, Kim can do that.
The purpose of this meeting was was not to to address these inconsistencies and so that we could bring in, you know, bring everything into line at once.
Right.
Rather than have to go back and kind of use Band-Aids all the time. I I think it was a much more.
Council president, can I ask a question? Um, all right, so we have one ordinance. This is second modification, modification again. By what ordinance do these people have to rely? The first ordinance?
That's the current one that's.
The current one? Or if you change it in two months, do they have to be under that or they grandfathered in? I I don't understand this whole process. So you can amend all you want and that might work for new people, but these people are in the breach right now.
Right.
So I don't know which ordinance they have to respond to.
Well, the the original, the original ordinance is output. It it the original law, this is good except for the farmland preservation aspect of it. And and this.
And you, and and also.
Very unclear. And one of the things they asked specifically for the council to very clearly state where they want these located.
Well, it's too mushy. Well, the, what the, the original ordinance was was sent to the council, excuse me, was sent to the land use board.
Right.
They had four.
They they had an opportunity to review it.
They did.
And they.
Back then, I don't know if they reviewed it.
Did the land use board, uh, look at this last year too?
Yeah, I don't know.
And how come it passed last year?
I don't know.
Yeah, that that's, you know, you you may have seen the the document that I sent. I asked, I asked the, uh, the planner who wrote their opinion of land use board. I said, I don't understand. We submitted this same ordinance essentially. Uh, and you said, uh, it's inconsistent with the, uh,
Master plan?
No, not farmland, but with the
Master plan.
Master plan. And 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 and, uh, and what what they said then is that this fits the master plan. And 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 they made a comment that was not necessary. They said, in addition, this ordinance here covers only, covers all licenses with the exception of retail sales. We recommend that you guys add retail sales to that. That's essentially what they said. They say, they said, so now we submit them the same ordinance, but we just take out a few words and they said it's inconsistent with the master plan. I don't see how, I don't see how that could be.
I have a feeling that it it's a different board that.
Well, I I think that that's it.
One sixteen was the original ordinance and it was sent and.
It's a different board.
Word and now in twenty-two, it's a different board. That that's.
And 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 I, and I, and I do understand that. Uh, and different boards make different decisions, but this is the thing, that when we have individuals who come before us like these two organizations and they say, tell us what the rules are, tell us what you really need. Here are all of our credentials. This is who we are. These are the people who are going to be part of our company. This is the background. We look at that and they said that we want to purchase land here or we want to lease land here so that we can have our cultivation operation. This is the piece of land that we plan to purchase. This is the piece of land that we have, we planted to, uh, to lease. Is this zone properly? We said, and and we say, yes, it is.
Uh, that's fine. I I asked a very simple question and it still hasn't been answered. Which ordinance do these people?
Maybe Josh can answer that.
Yeah, which one do they have to follow?
So most.
Stuff, but which one do they have to follow, Josh?
Well, right now they're going to follow whatever is on the books. If they get their license and approvals based on whatever is in effect at the time they submit it, they're going to assert that they're they're grandfathered in. I have a tough time finding that after somebody goes, this, but this is completely uncharted water here with respect to this ordinance uh, and cannabis regulation in New Jersey. I have a hard time finding that after somebody were to construct and start operating a multimillion dollar facility that the, and then the council subsequently says it can't happen in that zone, that they're going to have to tear it down. So most like, maybe grandfathered in just like any other, any other regulation. I mean, it seems to me that the the easy, if if the issue with the ordinance as presently drafted is the unlimited amount, that can be easily fixed by by making that amendment. I don't think that amendment would have to go to the land use.
Correct.
There, if there's a further amendment to take out the R zoning, then that should go back to the land use board.
Even though it was their recommendation?
If we, if we, uh, you know, con conform to their request, I mean.
Let me, let me take a look at that. It may, it may be that we don't have to go back. I I just want to take a look at that. So that that's my thoughts.
But but how about also the statement that the land must be west of Route five seventeen? That was, that was, if I'm not mistaken, the single factor that caused the the officials to withhold consideration and approval of the of the license.
That was part of it.
I believe so. Yeah, I guess we had the meeting here. Yeah.
Sorry?
It was deemed as unclear.
Unclear, right. It was inconsistent, right.
Can I, can I ask the, they're not applicants, but the two stakeholders, just one or two questions? Out of curiosity, because I'd love to get asked this at the land use board. Um, on both of you, you have a lease on your property and you've purchased your property already. Do you have a building on your property? There's not, so you're going to build a building and you don't have a building on your property either, I would assume. There is. There is. Okay, so you're going to use that as the containment facility, so to speak. Where you're going to grow.
No, it's, it's not, um, a building that that is.
So from the time you get approval and and you put your first shovel in the ground, to the time you sell the first bud, what do you think that timeline's going to be? Just out of curiosity.
I think for me, for speaking for us, it's, that's the question because based on the state coupled with also this hiccup is it kind of shifts the timeline because the timeline originally, I can say it was August. Now that's out the window. There has to be some submission of of plans that has to get approved and those aren't even being accepted. Final minus S issue is taken care of along the other. So there's a lot of, uh, gray, gray area.
But we're talking about probably a year.
Right.
Probably closer to a year.
A year and a half.
Probably closer to a year and a half.
A year and a half. Okay, and neither of you are micro licenses, correct? Your full licenses, you're not micro licenses.
Yes, micro.
You are a micro.
Are micro.
Yes, you're not a micro. Okay.
Your facility is going to be a micro license facility?
Yes.
Just, just so you know.
There's a difference.
Burn. I I visited recently a, um, very well-developed grower that does both, um, medical. I went through their facility and they, they pull a lot of money. I mean, they're talking almost when they're done. I mean, they're talking almost, when they're done, about a hundred million dollars. A lot of bucks. Very sophisticated grow. And they spoke about micro licenses. And I guess my only concern is the probability, or possibility, not probability, possibility of a micro license, getting a license and then flipping it to another grower. Now, there's no way we can control that, I would think, but that's just something that they brought up to me, basically.
The land use board is gonna ask if they're gonna give it to another grower?
They're gonna ask. Yeah, we can ask. I'm not saying they can't. I'm just saying that's, I was just told this by a grower that a micro grower sometimes just gets the license because the license and the location is more valuable than it, well, very valuable versus switching to a new facility and getting a new license. I personally don't care. I'm just bringing it out from what I was told.
Well, you know, the point, the point, you know, all these issues can be worked, as long as we I know, as long as we do not, as long as we do, then we talked about putting shovels in the ground, don't us all the stuff. If they don't have that document from our zoning official within a hundred and twenty days, they can forget about putting shovels in the ground, anything else. The key thing is that as long as, as long as we keep our commitment to them, we committed that the land that either they leased or they bought was suitable for this operation. Let's give them a shot at doing it. That's all that I'm saying. I don't really care about all the other stuff. As long as
As long as all the other stuff doesn't create a problem where they're, where they're rejected in any form. That's my concern.
They're rejected by?
By not being able to get approval from the township.
Counsel President, I just want to say, remind you of something the attorney said. Goes before the land use board, but you don't have to pay attention to the land. You can totally disregard their suggestions. And at that point, they're just a body that presents what the land use law is and their feelings on it, if you will. It's like a court. That's their decision out of the court, but you don't have to follow it as per the attorney's set.
Because
Just to keep that in mind.
Excuse me. Meeting is closed. Public right now.
He was a great spot to make.
I, it's, never mind. No, I got it. I got it. I'm good. Harry? Mr. Fury, have you anything to say?
Yeah, I'll let Harry. Side with the mayor. I think we should pass the ordinance addition, then we go back and get rid of the unlimited. Make a compromise there. And Mr. Rizzuto, you're absolutely correct. The problem is the northbound side. We checked that. Change that or include the west side, so this company can go forward. They'll meet their timelines. We had a lot of problems meeting the timelines last year when we were passing these ordinances. And if we do it Monday night, we aren't gonna be under the pressure of a timeline. Then we can really take the time to address it. These two companies can go forward with their plan.
Yeah.
And then we can amend the ordinance again. I mean, this is, you have to work together. You have to amend as it's going, as Counselor said. We weren't given the rules right from the start. I mean, I forward the ordinance I originally wrote, and I was, and Josh advised me, it's too restrictive. The state will not allow us all these restricted restrictions on these cultivators, distributors, and dispensaries. So we passed this ordinance Monday night. We go back, and Brian, I think this is online what you said. We changed the unlimited to whatever number you want. I don't know if it's a hundred, if it's six, it's ten, it's twelve. But it's unrealistic anyway. I don't think they're issuing any other licenses for two years.
They're not.
Yeah, they're running off. I think it's two more years. So it doesn't matter if it says unlimited, because there's not going to be the licenses.
Right.
And as far as the land use board goes, there wasn't a big change in the number.
No.
R two was clearly said in the first time they looked at it, and they approved, I think there was one vote, negative vote. So I don't know what changed in the land use board. I'm waiting to see their minutes. Jessica clearly said it meets the master plan, but the land use board went against their own professional.
Yep.
So I don't know what the arguments are there too. We can address their arguments and their concerns later on. So my advice is, pass it Monday night, then we look at it again. Let's get the land use board minutes, their notes, listen to their video, address their concerns, and these people can go on. It's a win-win for Vernon. You're giving jobs at a time when, when's the next time we'll ask go under four dollars? Two years from now? But if we can generate a hundred jobs, let's be conservative. And all this additional revenue. And then, Brian, to address the roads, right, we've heard that. We already have in the ordinance, I think it's fifteen percent is directed towards law enforcement and education. You could change that later on. Why don't you throw ten percent of those receipts, or some number that we all agree on, improving the roads? And I think the mayor, you put that forward to in the conversation.
Yep.
So I think there's a lot of things we can do, but let's let them get the ball rolling, and then we can take our time and get the rest of these concerns addressed.
I don't disagree. My, my questions have been, I don't want to see this coming back again. That's why I asked that we have this meeting. So we're gonna ask the attorney again. If we only move on this ordinance, twenty-one eleven, or was it twenty?
It is.
Twenty-two eleven.
Twenty-two eleven. Twenty-two eleven.
And bring the number back to two and make the change on the statement on five seventeen. Are we okay to hold to the existing schedule?
What would happen would be if you make that amendment, which essentially is changing the phrase unlimited to two, making the other amendment requested by the land use board, the thirteenth would be the first reading, the twenty-seventh would be the adoption.
We can't have this one that's the second reading and
No, because you're, no, because you're making an amendment.
They're making an amendment.
Making the change.
And it's more than, it's a substantial amendment to the ordinance.
Okay, so what would we have to do then to make it a non-substantial amendment to the
A non-substantial amendment would have to be something like for this ordinance. I'm looking at it right now on my phone while we're
What about the number, Josh?
The number, I think, is, I think that unfortunately is a substantial amendment.
So are you talking like a typo?
Yeah, like correcting a typo, a grammatical error, removing an and or
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's only a two-week difference. These companies have the ball rolling. They're professionals. They're getting their paperwork together in preparation of us approving it. So I think when you say, let's let's let them get the ball rolling, I think that's a misrepresentation, because they are. They're here. They've submitted plans that the mayor's reviewed. So I, I don't, I don't want to keep going back to something. I'd like to do it right. I think we do something wrong, and then we amend. I'd like to do it right.
So then, if we were going to do those two, the road, five seventeen, and the number, if we're going to include it in that change for, and making this the first reading, correct?
Yep.
Why not then add the, the question on the R, the R, the R, the R two?
Well, yeah, you would just strip out the R zoning in the section as well.
So that would not be a problem then?
No, I mean, look, you're already making one substantial.
That's what I mean.
So you can make a hundred of them at that point.
Yeah.
And it wouldn't affect these two orders?
No, it wouldn't affect them.
That's what I was asking.
No, yeah.
I don't, I don't know if the removal of the R designation will or will not affect them. I don't know what the zoning is for their two sites, so that, that I don't know.
Yeah.
Question for the zoning officer and for the applicants.
Okay.
Okay. Are we set then for that? I'm good.
Am I, can I, can I say something?
Of course, Mike.
Thank you. So you You all forgot about me.
No, Pat asked you, and you said, I'll let, I'll let Harry.
He asked you twice, Mike.
I asked Harry to talk first. So I, the only, only comment I have is I, I'm in agreement with Mayor Burrell's recommendations that, that on Monday's meeting, that we, we pass the ordinance as it's written. Listen, we, in December of two thousand twenty-one, we made a commitment to these two companies, and we need to follow through with that commitment. And we need to support economic development, and this is gonna have a substantial positive impact on the economy of Vernon. So I think we need to, we need to pass the ordinance as written and then reintroduce any changes that we all can agree on at a later date. Now, I was the person who, who recommended the change from two to what ended up being unlimited. I'd be more than happy to reduce unlimited to any kind of reasonable number that we can all agree upon. Now, there are, I know thirty-four were, were given, thirty-seven were supposed to be given. There rooms, leaves some room for a possibility of additional three cultivation licenses. If we make this commitment to these two companies and follow through with that commitment, I think we're sending a strong message to the, to the, to people out, out there that we're doing everything we can to stimulate the local economy. There's a, I fully support, if we do make any changes, to consider any kind of use, the use of the money or the revenue for any kind of infrastructure improvement, whether it's, whether it's road maintenance, water, sewer, infrastructure, whatever it is, it's a, it's a, it's a move in the positive direction. So, you know, we need to get this right. We need to honor the commitment, make that, pass it on Monday. Re-consider what the changes are gonna be, reintroduce it. And then, and then the next time we do it, I think we all agree, and I agree, that we need to get it completely right. This is, this is not, you know, these laws, rules, regulations have been changing, and they're not, haven't been as clear as they should be. But I think we need to be on the right side of history and do the right thing. So that's all I
I think that's what we all agree. I mean, the, our attorney has told us that, that the number is a significant change, so we can't pass it, can't revert to the old ordinance and just have it go through as a second reading. It's just unfortunate with the change in number was too much. But if we're going to have the opportunity to make the change in the number back to two, then also why not include the road? And if in fact there's an R two question in there, and then what about the requirement that the product be grown in an enclosed facility? Are we stretching the point now?
I think, I think I wouldn't recommend making that change, because I think you're, while you're not gonna run into a preemption, I don't think you're gonna run into a preemption issue there, because the state requires it. I think you're, you're moving, you're moving closer to what could possibly be challenged, given what the current state regulations are. So I would, you know, hesitate to include that as well.
So just those three?
Yeah, similar, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Counsel President, I was just made aware that one of these properties is in, currently in an R two zone. So we go back to my question again. Which ordinance do they follow?
Which property is that?
The one that's currently active. You know, the other two have, is, haven't gone, you know, haven't been approved. We haven't voted on.
It's been approved, so.
Yeah, so we have an ordinance right now.
Yeah, which
So we would have to then
Remove the R two.
We remove the R two classification or waive it?
Yeah, because they're, they're in an R two zone.
So we'd just be removing the R one designation?
I'm sorry?
We'd just be stripping out the R one.
And not the R two?
Okay.
All right. See, my, my, yeah. This, this, this really is not an adversarial situation. We all are working to try, we're struggling. We all, we all are working to try to do the right thing here. My, my concern is that if we don't pass this ordinance as it is on next Monday, we're gonna start digging into looking at the thing, and I don't want us to, I don't want that date
You don't want the wheel reinvented. I understand.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't want that to happen. And, and I do think that after we pass this ordinance, we do have plenty of time to pontificate, to do whatever we really want to do. We know we can after that. I understand what you're saying. Let's just get it all right.
I think because we didn't do that, that's why we're here, you know, originally. I think that's kind of, you know
But since we, but since doing it with four changes or doing it with one change makes no difference. We might as well include the four and get it done right. Counselor, do you, what do you think?
No, I agree with you. If you're gonna make one change, you might as well make a hundred if you want to.
Why don't you just use the word unlimited again?
No, no, I agree with you. I agree with the, the concept that if you're gonna make one substantial change and you feel that other substantial changes are needed, you should make those. And then you accelerate the process of, of having to revise it down the road.
I guess there's no change that has been cop, that has been contemplated here that would not be substantial. Am I correct, Josh? Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying. The
That is what he's saying.
The change in number, the change in number from unlimited back to two would be a substantial change in the ordinance.
Okay, that's one change. Because Pat had four. What's the second?
I think Pat was just saying that if
Five seventeen issue?
I think Pat was just saying that if you have one or if you have four, or if you have two or three, it doesn't matter.
It's gonna be the same timeframe.
Right. Yeah, it's gonna be the same timeframe anyway.
Exactly.
Exactly.
And I caution the mayor and the rest of our council members to not start spending this money that these people have before we even start to get it. Let's, let's face it. You know
With, with those changes noted. Marcy, do you have them down? Just be clear, okay? Don't have them.
No, but I'll, I'll, I'll get it.
Okay. Okay, we, we'll make sure that we have this on the agenda for Monday night and introduce a new ordinance, correct?
No, I think, no, no, I think what you would do is you would amend ordinance twenty-two
Eleven.
Eleven.
Twenty-two eleven to include the new provisions.
Okay, okay. It would be a first reading.
Yes, so the, the way the process would work is the ordinance would be amended. The amendments would get the requisite number of votes. The amended ordinance would then be introduced, and if it gets the requisite number of votes, that's the first reading of the ordinance as amended.
Are we okay?
I'm good.
Harry? Mike?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Harry?
All good.
Okay, good. So that's what we'll do for Monday night. That sounds good. Okay. Well, I guess we've pretty much completed tonight. No, no, I'm not gonna let you off that easy. It's only a little less, a little over and out.
Come on.
Oh, come on.
Oh, God, Pat.
Jeopardy. It's over already. I thought we'd get old.
I don't have to.
No, okay. No problem.
Yeah, I mean, I made some notes, but I think we're good.
Good enough. Thank you very much for coming, applicants. I hope we haven't confused you too much. But we understand the timeline. We understand also that there were commitments made on the part of the council. And since those commitments were made, I'm not, we're not about to try and look for a way to back out, so. With that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Lynch. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Bucchieri. Roll call, please.
Vice President Bucchieri?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Lynch?
Yes.
Councilmember Shortway?
Yes.
Senator Rizzuto?
Yes.
She carries.
If you go, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Everyone, Monday. Even though this didn't This is the best deliberative process.